Our appeal in this matter remains pending. We asked the environmental court to stay the permit, which would have prevented the Howard Center from beginning construction, well, continuing construction, they had already begun construction. That request was denied, but the, the appeal to the environmental court continues. We have begun the discovery process, which takes some matter of months, after which there'll be an opportunity for the parties to make motions for summary judgment, which is a way to decide the case in part or in whole, based upon the law. And then if there are factual disputes that survive that process, there would be a trial and then the matter would be decided. So we are many months, I think, from a resolution of that case, but the case continues. Did I miss something, David?
No, we will be providing information up on our website, which is under the, will be under the school board tab. So if people are interested in following along, we'll work to keep that information up to date with the current.
And actually, you do raise a point that I forgot, with respect to what we're going to put up, and our intention is to post all of the pleadings, that is, all of the official documents that are filed with the court on the website, so that members of the public can see exactly what's happening. Are there no questions on that point? That takes us to the next item on our agenda. Do we have a student representative report tonight?
Yes.
All right.
So, the first thing, this week, they updated the lunch system in the high school, so, path three is open, and then there's a daily pasta bar now, so that's pretty cool. And, yeah, so that's increased the lunch sales. And students are really excited about that. And then, we also got new water bottle filler stations, which was really nice, and I checked at the end of the day today, and we've saved over eleven hundred plastic bottles, or plastic. So that's cool.
In three days?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, and that's just one of them. And then, recently, a group of student council members met with Mr. Burke for the student forum as a follow-up, and we're gonna do an extended face time at the end of May, and then we're looking into doing an activities fair for all grades some, uh, next year, instead of just freshman. So that was really interesting. And then there's a student council blood drive on May twenty-third, so we're working on that. If you guys wanna donate and know anyone...
We're welcome, huh?
Yeah. And then, AP exam are coming up. That should be done.
There are more fun for those of us who want to take them.
Thank you, Sabina.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sabina, though, with respect to the, the water bottle filling stations, is that something that the district funded, or where did these come from?
There was an effort that was put in through the high school, really. We have old drinking fountains, or drinking fountain locations, and actually, if you go there, though, you could walk by and say they're drinking fountain, but if you look a little bit more intently, you'll see that there's actually a filling station where you can fill a bottle. Cause as you know, if you've tried to fill a bottle in typical drinking fountains, it's the tip and can't really fill issue, and so those have been retrofitted, and that's something that's been supported by the green team, I think, Mr. Burke, as well as other funding sources.
Just picture of them on my block.
All right.
Of the actual...
I'll read yours if you read mine.
I read yours, Dan. You're the law or whatever.
Okay.
You don't post daily, I do.
I do. More like monthly these days. Thank you. Okay, thanks very much. That takes us to the superintendent.
So I've identified just a, a couple items in here. The playground here that we're currently at the site, and there's a fair amount of interest here in updating what we know is, you know, a pretty, a structure that's becoming aged here. So, there is a need, and there's a desire. Again, I, my job is a little bit to try to be an equity coordinator between the three schools around what happens at our playgrounds, and certainly Rick Markcott has definitely a playground upgrade, given the structure. The structure has served its purpose well, but we've certainly see that it's tiring. So, very supportive of that, I'm wanting to let you know that. Again, I'm mindful of the Chamberlain, the Orchard Schools, as well as looking at them, and again, I feel that they're fairly comparable. The Schools Out program, again, we've, I had it on the agenda, I filled in some questions, there're gonna be some additional from the board, but I do think it's a positive go-ahead. This is, again, a program that's been a major, you know, positive revenue generator for us, and I'm very conscious about the cost issue, but also of the waiting list and trying to meet the needs of our parents, children, and the after-school care. We've been, I think, fairly diligent about that, and we added last year, middle school, which had fairly small participation, although we understand next year registrations are up, so that's, that's taking on a positive response. And then, graduation information, just letting you know when that is. Again, it's a great event, board members are there, but also others are just wanting to be, I'm wanting to remind them, that's the June fourteenth, starts at ten. We're back at St. Mike's, so it's a great site, and it will be aired live for all of our sites, our four other schools, Tuttle and the three elementary schools, and Patrick and I have worked to make sure that that's gonna be aired by RATN Live, and that will be integrated into their, their day. Stuart's working with me on that, so that's a major component of the in-service celebration for our, our district as, as kids walk. So, as I said earlier, diplomas are ready, and I think it's important to hear that, ready for signing, and Patrick, I think the board's interested to maybe do some signing with you in the lobby, if that, if, if you know when that might be going on. They're currently in my office, I, I don't know how aggressive you wanna be, I don't know how much time Patrick usually takes to do that, but there is an interest by the board, and we can talk more about that. So, again, that's graduation.
It's not like on my schedule, but we can figure something out.
Yeah.
And just so you know, tell the seniors, just cause there's a diploma with their name on it...
Doesn't mean they get it.
Doesn't mean they get it. On June seventeen.
Thank you, Patrick. And then, just letting you know, again, we're moving forward with the HR director and the nutritional service director. Committees have been formed and timelines have been set. We have our first kickoff meeting on the thirteenth, which is Monday, advertisements are out, and I know a couple of board members are participating, I think Diane on HR and Julie on nutrition services, so I thank you for that. And that concludes my report.
Other questions for the superintendent? Diane?
David, we just wanted to ask you on the playground, is that reviewed for accessibility and all of that as a new structure?
It will be, so all of our, you know, ADA issues, the things that we've been working hard on to provide access, so that will be very much on the lens, and again, we'll be working with them. John will be working with the business office on bid acquisitions and things of that nature to really make sure that that's done correctly.
Thanks.
And on that as well, you know, knowing that city center is down the road a ways, but has the potential to impact the school, yeah, is this gonna be a portable structure?
Well, they're not really portable, but it will be transferable. I would say, the current site that we have right now, the wooden structure, are major, major footings underneath them. These will have footings, but they'll be transferable. We'll make sure, again, most of the new structures now you can excavate accordingly and move them, you know, to a new site if you needed to. Again, just having the flexibility with kind of the unknown has been also a conversation that we'll make sure to be clear about.
Just one further thing. On that, I'd just like to recognize Elizabeth Walker, who is in the audience right now, who is heading this up, and thank you for, for doing so, Elizabeth.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So, that's my report.
And David, I have another question on, on Schools Out. I had asked for some additional information. It really did take me as a surprise that we were running a deficit in Schools Out, and it sounds like we have reserves, which is the positive news, but it sounds like at least for two years, we've been running a deficit, and I don't know how much, how much further in the past that went. So I was not aware we were tapping into reserves to fund the enterprise. Are we going to get a more thorough review before the expansion is authorized?
I will provide, I mean, one of the things for me, and this is similar to nutrition service, kind of the move forward directive that I provided the board last time, was that, you know, there's a need for more timely budgetary information that goes to the directors, and, and to me, in concert, really, about looking at how we move forward, where we're at. And so that, that stands true with, with Schools Out as well. We often move, move along quite regularly through the year, and we often, we don't necessarily take a look at, how are we doing, as much as we should. So, that said, similar protocols will be in place for Schools Out, as has been indicated with, with Nutrition Services. The past data, again, I'm interested in, you know, where we, where have our hits been a little bit. Has it been as we've added staff, when we expanded, when we had the license expansion, is it specific to directors of, of a new site, directors a little bit more, when we added the middle school? So I'm digging into that, and I think that's, I'm happy to provide that back to the board, kind of a status of, of where we are, and kind of what have been some of those touch points for us.
Well, I understand, I understand the, the need that the community has with the waiting list we have, but it didn't make a lot of sense to me to expand the program if we're running in the red right now. So, I don't know what the process you'll take to, you know, kind of look at how we're gonna continue to operate in the black, preserve the reserves, and, you know, and allow for the expansion.
Yeah. Again, I, I would be happy to go into more detail and have John, you know, sit and share that with you. I mean, I do feel confident in that it's going to run in the black, understanding that the middle school was a major blip for us this, this past year, and again, that was an added risk that we felt was important to make that transition. I'm happy to provide that to you. I think that we're definitely with a, with a waiting list, with the expansion of the increased participation at the middle school, I think we're gonna be very much in, in a positive cash flow, so...
Can we see the, those forecasts? I guess that's my fundamental question.
Sure. Yeah. Again, I think it's important right now, you know, the reason that I'm wanting to be somewhat timely with this decision is we've got people who typically wait, I mean, we have people that camp, literally camp outside our campuses to get a spot, and so there's a major demand and need, partly because it's a very favorable program, and, you know, there's only so many slots. So, even the added ten spots is still gonna put that piece on there. So, it's important for me to be able to have that move forward directive to Lee Lanfier. I'm certainly...
What's the timing on? I mean, are you talking about having to move forward with, before we have a chance to see a projection?
Yeah, I mean, we, basically, I think early next week, they have, you know, they have the registration sign up, because moms and dads are trying to make decisions around care, you know, for their children, extending their care for their kids. So, that's also been part of our waiting list discussion timeline, so I'm not saying we couldn't delay that, but I think that would, that would create some, some concern. And again, I, I say this because we have been in a positive cash flow, and it may be that we do need to tweak our rates down the road a little bit to make sure we're in that, but again, we have a very positive draw right now from the public who want their children in the program, so...
Well, I think the point that Elizabeth made, if I understand, is if you think about this as kind of a machine, you know, if the machine is operating in a way that creates a surplus, so long as it continues to do that, that's great, but if you have a machine that's creating a deficit, and you expand the size of the machine, you don't change anything about the way that it works, what you get is a larger deficit. So, I, I, you know, the answer to the board question that was given indicated that the addition of Fredrick Tuttle started out slower than predicted, which I take means we got fewer students, fewer students came in at a lower pace. If that's where the loss comes from, that tells us a lot, but it doesn't quite say that's the source of it, and I, I would like to feel confident that we understand what changed about the machine, so that it generates red numbers instead of black numbers.
But also, it sounds like it was, it was in the red even before Tuttle was added. So it looked, it looks like we were dipping into reserves to maintain the program, at least you, you referenced in your report, David, a year prior, or in the answer to the question here. So, I think an understanding of sort of what did the last three years look like, and what are the next three years gonna look like, so we can understand what the impact of adding Tuttle was, what the anticipated, obviously, there were some numbers anticipated for Tuttle, I don't know if we met them or didn't, why or why not, and then it sounds like there's some positive momentum going on the middle school program, so why is that? Where's it coming from? What's the order of magnitude? But, you know, I do have concerns based on, you know, the, the seven years of the track record with nutritional services that I've been witness to, that once we start running in the red, we don't have a good game plan, we, to get out of it, and, and we don't look operationally. We, we're expanding a program that we're running in the red on right now.
Yeah, and, and I'm happy to, you know, give you back some information. Again, I'm trying to be timely to, to the desired need. I think we also have some things that play where we can, down the road, with a more specific eye, look at the rate that we're charging. That's something I think that we probably should have been paying more attention to. We certainly have participation rates beyond what we can even control, so there's a, there's certainly a demand there. So I'm happy to, I'm happy to, you know, give you a little bit more about the reason for the, for running in the red. I, and again, if that holds that up a little bit, I, again, I don't know, I know next week is a major day for them, that's been publicized in the past for waiting, you know, for the waiting list, so...
It's the Saturday, May fourth.
Fourth.
And what will happen Saturday is that people, students will be registered.
Well, parents have...
Parents hang out overnight to be in line, in the queue, to be able to be one of the sixty-five.
Yeah. So I, I have not been, I have not been present, I'm not wanting to say that it's, you know, everybody camps out, but I just know that it's been a major stressor for School Out employees, as well as others helping out around trying to, you know, meet the needs of individuals who wanna get into the program, so...
And I think it's very important that we do do, you know?
So I'm, I'm fine to give you some, you know, I, I certainly am proposing a move forward. I think that it's a, it's going to be a positive cash flow move forward. I think there's things we can do to adjust our rate. Our rates are very, very reasonable. I think we can adjust that rate in the, in the upcoming year. We certainly have a fund balance that's been in there, that many of these same folks have contributed to that fund balance. When we added some licensing, we added some additional director-type positions, I believe that was a major piece, plus the middle school director job was a major, kind of, three-year kind of flow, and now we're, you know, then we were able to expand, you know, at a time when we, when we knew that we could add numbers, so... Let me give you some information, I'll try to do that by the, by the weekend, I'd like to be able to give Lee a kind of a definitive answer on the move forward objective.
I think, I think one of the fundamental problems, David, is like, last year, we heard from Lee in a report about Schools Out, and we didn't hear anything about the deficit situation. And so now we're in sort of a time crunch situation where we are surprised and don't, don't know what to, what we're looking at, so...
Well, yeah.
I think that could be avoided.
This is an opportunity to expand it with our license, and so it's really the waiting list. It's not, we aren't stopping the program, we aren't stopping the registration, so it's, it's not terrible, I mean...
Well, let me, let me rephrase this and see if I understand it correctly. We're gonna accept registrants. We're not necessarily making an irrevocable commitment to run the program for all those registrants on Saturday.
If I don't, if we don't right now expand it, then we accept only the numbers in which we've had before. The waiting list is still created, decision can come back, you know, I'm not wanting to, you know, overly rush this. Again, I'm, I brought it forth last, you know, last meeting, and, you know, we've asked some good questions here, I'm finding, again, this is an important program for our families and students, it's an important program for us, so I'm happy to give you some more, more detail, and, you know, we'll do that, you know, as soon as I can.
So with the understanding that, that no irrevocable commitment is gonna be made Saturday to run this program, we can wait and get our info, get the information, make a final decision when we've got it? Is that agreeable?
We could do that at the next board meeting.
Yeah, I mean, we would, let me just clarify, Rich, we would still run the program, are you saying we wouldn't have the additional slots?
Well, that's the question.
Right. Yes, but I mean, we're gonna keep it as is.
Oh yeah, I'm not talking about ending the program.
We can be clear with them, we're, it's under discussion, you know, the expansion.
Was there, just out of curiosity, was there any rate increase discussed for this upcoming session?
Not that I know of, not with me. And so again, this plays back in part why, you know, kind of what I will say, the more frequent conversations around where we are, you know, and how we're doing kind of by month by month, based on a target by month, or, you know, something that's more tangible. And again, I think that's, you know, very important for us to have in place.
Can I ask one, one more question? So, so for the middle school, how many participants are there now, and what's the expansion for the middle school?
I don't know their actual number in front of me, I know that they have, you know, less than ten, but their expansion option is, is, you know, similar to the, to the elementary schools, up to sixty-five.
All right, so the elementary schools are not expanding, this is, the expansion is just at the middle school?
No, it would, it would be for elementaries, while we would add ten, the proposal is to add ten additional spaces at the elementaries.
Per school.
And is there, per school.
And is there additional staff being hired for that?
No, we would not need to do that.
So essentially, these ten additional are bringing in the additional twenty-two-hundred, whatever it is, by six hundred dollars per?
There's no directorship needed, there is, in some cases, some additional staff, some additional staff.
I see three additional part-time staff.
I think what we're, what, again, I definitely included that, what I know currently is that we probably are not going to need all three, so...
All right, I just was...
And, and obviously, when you do this figure based on the number of, on the waiting list that offset the staff, you know, that's the positive, you know, cash flow.
David, that would be part-time, non-benefited positions, right? That's different than a directorship.
These, these positions do have benefits within as well, yeah. And most of them are year, most of them are longer than their school year and extended, because summer programs are also part of this program. And that's a, that's a major, major interest by our parents, that there's connectivity, there's connection to school, there's connections to, you know, supporting the work that goes on in the schools, academic, you know, some academic support, you know, structures and things of that nature have also been very important to this program. Again, it's got major, 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 you know, accolades. Again, that's not what we're talking about here, we're talking really just about the opportunity to expand, so I'm happy to give you some more information.
Okay. Welcome there. Thank you. That takes us to administrative reports, and the first one is Staff Recognition Award Update.
So...
I have a document on that, I see.
Which is on the...
Yes.
Take that, man.
So, the staff recognition, again, this is the, the award that the board has given out last year, it's the first time, and again, I don't have a lot to report really, that other than the fact that, you know, our criteria is, is there, we have a little bit more lead time this year. We will be talking about it administratively at our next administrative meeting, again, this is, can go to any staff member, you know, individuals within our district working to meet the outcomes of our end, so we're in the process of identifying that, a candidate or two that would, would be eligible for that, and we'll be back to give that to you. So again, this was, I believe you had the opportunity, you have had the opportunity to pass a look at the candidate criteria, the rubric. And again, I'm happy to entertain any questions, and Lynn, you know, has been helpful to me in the past, putting this together, so if there's questions specific that I have to answer, I'll do it.
Are there any questions? I don't see any.
Great.
Okay.
So, the next is actually just providing an update, and again, appreciative of Pat Burke being here, principal of the high school, to give a little bit of an overview of the foundation, and I know he's prepared a brief PowerPoint or something for you, I believe, and I need to probably move it. So, welcome, Patrick, thanks for being here, I know you, things are busy for you, due to time of year, a lot of good things going on in the high school, but thanks for being here.
Happy to be here. So I'll be brief and then mentor any questions, can, it's pretty much all I hear, and, and I, I don't wanna make too many assumptions, but I think that most folks on the board have been, this is my good side, my bad. Yeah, all right. So, most of you folks are familiar with the, the work that the foundation's done, you can go right to me. And, these are some things I just wanted to talk about tonight, you can bring the whole list down. We, we currently continue to operate an alumni office, that's housed at the high school. It is a separate entity from the foundation, and we can talk a little bit about that later. The foundation, as you would expect, has a mission, it's very important, and I'll make note of some highlights within the mission. The makeup of the board, the process that is followed around initiatives that the foundation would pursue, future opportunities, and then the budget. So, those are just some talking points, and I would expect questions to come in those areas. It's important to note that the foundation's mission is to support the school district's efforts, and we wanted to, the folks who started the foundation, really wanted to make sure that there was a guarantee of alignment between the foundation's work and the school district's work. So, the foundation couldn't go off and, and do something that wasn't a priority of the school district, so that's written into the mission of the foundation, as well as there are elements of the bylaws that reflect that, that guarantee. So, here are some of the subbullets that go along with our mission. Obviously, supporting all students within the district, improving the qualities of the programs, expanding the community of learners to include alumni, establishing a targeted annual fund, establishing targeted capital funds, improving school facilities within the district, and then establishing some endowments for specific programs, I'm gonna talk about that again a little bit later, specific to scholarships, and, and there you have the final bullet, maintaining scholarship, the, the penultimate bullet there, maintaining and grow the scholarships and awards, and then identify lists of capital needs at each school, and establish a volunteer program, what else? Those are all functions that, in the past, an identified district leader or executive director of the foundation performed the bulk of those tasks, with the possible exception of the third bullet, which is something that is currently being done by a part-time alumni director that we still maintain. So the executive committee, I'm the president of the foundation, that's, I have not held that role for the entire existence of the foundation, we had, some other folks have been president. I've always been on the board, at one point, I was the secretary of the foundation. Matt Gaiat is a teacher at the middle school, I'm sorry, I stand there. He's a school counselor, and he is also a graduate of South Burlington, he's on the board. Joanna Bott is treasurer of the board, the vice president position is open. The executive director was a position that was part of the school district's budget, but, and that was when the alumni and development office was still in existence, right now we just have an alumni office in existence. The person who ran the development side of the alumni and development office, and just to go back in time, Peter Ross was the founder of that, or the original development officer, then Aaron Lyman and Angie Armour followed, and then the position was eliminated, and so now we have a part-time alumni director. The alumni director doesn't have a formal intersect with the foundation, although the person who's in that job has been helping make sure that the minimum requirements for the foundation to remain in line with our 501(c)(3) status, as well as our, in compliance with our own bylaws, she helps push that along, essentially, as a volunteer. So again, this is the board configuration, this is, now, these are positions that are in, you can pull it all the way down, when, these are positions that, within the bylaws, this is what the board is, the board of the foundation is supposed to look like. Right now, we have a number of open positions... the board of the foundation is supposed to look like. Right now, we have a number of open positions. And Martin is still our school board rep on the board, and Mr. Cassidy, you've done that, and going back all the way to Leslie Williams, that are all folks who've served that in that capacity as a school board member on the foundation board. And again, that's just reflective, the high school principal and the school board member, as per the bylaws, members of the foundation board is further indication of that alignment that we want to make sure exists between the nonprofit and the school district. So this is the Elizabeth slide. These are our holdings and investments, and actually, this is. That was, that was meant to be respectful. So the, currently, we have a general scholarship fund. And in that general scholarship fund, we have $350,000. There's an academic booster fund, which was, I would say, recently, fairly recently established, and I'll come back and talk about that in a minute. The Kamoli Fund for Scholarships, much of that fund came by way of large gifts from a small number of people. And then we have other fund, which has $2,000 in it, which is kind of what the investment people refer to as cash, but it's not really cash. It's just in a money market or something. Now, one of the advantages to being a 501(c)(3) foundation is that we can pursue safe, yet more aggressive investment strategies than a municipality can. So we have an investment committee that does remain active. The investment committee meets as required and has met recently a number of times to review all of our portfolios to make sure that the money that we are holding is working for the goals that we have in terms of generating revenue. What we really like to see is the scholarship fund generating revenue so that some of those scholarships can become perpetually funded. And that's, that's an ambitious goal, but, and it got harder in, when the market went south. But more recently, we've seen some, some sunnier returns on our investments in the scholarship fund. And we believe with our current investment strategy that we'll actually be able to protect the principal and make our awards as we do annually. So we're hoping for a few years where we actually may be able to grow the fund and continue to give out the same amount of money that we've been given out. So that's, that's, that's a rosier report than I probably would have given in terms of our investments. So then scholarships, as mentioned, we distribute around $22,000 in memorial and community scholarships each year. Most of those are given out at graduation. I would say the, one exception, academic boosters has an application process that students and/or teachers can apply for kind of mini-grants to support academic work. So I'm not going to remember all of the mini-grants, but I'll give you a highlight of one specific one. That was pretty incredible. We had a young woman as a senior last year, and she was working on a project that's learning experience whereby she was a, and she was, her heritage was from the Marshall Islands. And so she created a, she created a learning plan that included traveling to the Marshall Islands, working in an orphanage there, and also donating a significant amount of like resources, books and things like that to this preschool in the Marshall Islands. And she applied for an academic booster mini-grant and was successful. And so part of our academic boosters, we kind of have one of those, I should have brought it. We have like a board that shows all the different things that academic booster supports, and, and there's some information about that. Academic boosters, though, to be honest, isn't something that we're really pushing out to everybody to say, hey, you know, you should ask academic boosters for money, because the reality is that $13,000 would be gone in just no time. And so we do, it is kind of a quiet fund in many ways, now that I'm on TV. But it is a quiet fund because we really want to grow that so that we're not, you know, giving, giving out all the principal every year. And so we also want to make sure that students and staff have exhausted all other opportunities for fundraising. But as you know, you can't really turn your car around in the parking lot without somebody getting up for some kind of fundraiser. But academic boosters has supported a, a number of different student groups and, and individual students. Academic boosters has supported the Rebel Roots work. That's another example of a teacher that requested a mini-grant from academic boosters, and that worked out. As everybody's really familiar with Rebel Boosters, the athletic boosters, and they're, they have a great business plan that generates consistent revenue by way of ski swap plus snack bar at the athletic facility. And so we would like to imagine that we could come up with some kind of business plan that has academic boosters generating revenue regularly so that it could be something that supports the academic side of the house. I'll tell you that in next week or the week after, the freshmen don't know this yet, I'm sure they'll be watching, so they'll find out by way of RITN. But every freshman who's made the honor roll for first, second, and third quarter, I'm going to host them for a principal's breakfast in the cafeterias during FaceTime. So they're all going to get a little invitation, and then they can come down, and that academic boosters money is buying the bagels. So that's just a small example of how we try to put that money to good use. And there are people for whom academic boosters is their philanthropic priority, and some people do like the United Way thing, and a couple of dollars come out of every paycheck and go to academic boosters, so trying to grow that. Other opportunities, so again, this is, these are the opportunities that we're trying to grow, and opportunities that we'd like to imagine that, that we could do more. And I should say, I should have given a little bit more of a history lesson at the very beginning. You folks have been on the board for a while. For folks who are not familiar with this, the athletic complex at the high school is, is probably, the athletic complex at the high school remains the nicest athletic facility in the state for sure. And I'm almost, I think I'm going to include UVM's facility. Actually, Middlebury's is probably nicer. But aside from that, it's definitely the nicest. And that facility was in significant, I don't want to say completely, but it's because somebody will call me on that, because somewhere underneath the earth is probably some taxpayer money. But that was not a bond vote. That was not, that's not an operating budget expense. The foundation, with the help of volunteers, raised that money to put up that facility, and it remains a pretty, a pretty incredible addition to our school community, and certainly the student athletes who, and the phys ed classes, and the middle school recess, and all the things that happen out there have really greatly benefited from that. And, you know, I, I think that the district remains indebted to the foundation and the people who started it for that work. So, you know, I see, these are, these are things that I see as opportunities for the future in terms of the foundation. There's a fairly big caveat relative to that, but I think academic boosters does provide some potential low-hanging fruit for us from a pre-K through 12 perspective. Advancement initiatives, I think, also could be, there could be some opportunities out there for us. We have very loyal alumni. And there are a number of local philanthropists that education is definitely their priority. And I think that the foundation and/or the alumni office could do a nice job in helping the district with communications around, keeping in touch with alumni, and telling good stories about some of the successes of our former students. But I think you could pretty much track the success of the development side of alumni and development. There's just pretty much a straight line between the success of that endeavor and the support for a professional to operate that entity. So when Pete Ross was here, he was a new school administrator, so he was on administrative contract. And, you know, he made somewhere between $70,000 and $85,000, I'm just putting that out there, total comp. He brought in, in eighteen months, eighteen to 24 months, over a million dollars in gifts to the district. Then Pete left, and we replaced him with a non-certified position at about half of the rate. That person was still an advancement professional. They were successful, but not nearly as successful as Peter had been brought in, in, you know, I don't know, $100,000, I'm making that up, something like that. And then, obviously, since, since we've eliminated that development side of the position, there's really no, there's no, you have to know a lot about what it means to raise money, and it's a lot of relationship-based work. And so if, if you don't have the person that's doing that work, making those connections, they call it donor relations, things like that, then, then the bottom will kind of, will fall out on your efforts. And that, and candidly, that's really where we sit right now. And, you know, I think that we're the district to, the good, you know, the good news is the foundation still exists, you know, the, our 501(c)(3) status is strong. We file our taxes every year, you know, all of that. We're still performing this important function of managing the scholarship funds, and that's going really well. If we did want to get back in the business of capital campaigns, annual funds, things like that, I mean, we need to, to make a thoughtful decision about, firstly, educating ourselves and the public about what it really means to run a advancement office or a development office, and make a commitment to, to staffing that office adequately. And, you know, understandably, we're just not right, we're not there right now, considering what's going on in the district. But if we were going to go back in that direction, you know, I, I'm not an expert, but it seems to me that it worked once before, and I can imagine that it would work again.
Well, the, the point that I would make about that from my experience with, when I was on the foundation board and watching the foundation operate, is that there is potential to raise funds from our audiences. You know, from our community, from our alumni. But you can't do that if you don't put energy to it.
Right.
What year was that decision cut? Do you remember roughly?
Three years, four years, three years. But also, I mean, it seemed in my short time where we actually were having meetings, that one of the issues was that a lot of that money was raised because there was a specific goal of the athletic complex. And there didn't seem to be a capital goal or a goal to really shoot towards. I know that we talked about, for instance, a potential one-to-one initiative, how we could work that in, but the district ended up doing that. So it just seemed like there, you know, is, is there a big capital need or a big project that can be the focus? And that seemed to be what was missing. I don't know if there is now, or one will come up, but that seemed to be when it functioned best.
Yeah, and I think ultimately, that's up to the district, you know. You know, is, is there a campaign that the district wants to, you know, yeah, to get behind and, and run? And what I, what I don't think, what was important about the, the order of operations with the athletic complex was, first, the district said, this is a really desperate need for us to fix. Then, and at the same time said, we don't really know if we have the money to do it. And then the, the arms, it started out as volunteer effort, but it quickly ramped up into the formation of the foundation, et cetera. And then the foundation broadened itself to include the scholarships. And, and having 501(c)(3) status is, I'm told, an advantage to donors, as opposed to a municipality. I don't know the difference, but it's not to say that. And so anyway, right now, people can still make gifts to the district and/or gifts to the foundation. And, you know, we have a gifting policy, actually. The, the policy on gifts came by way of the work of folks involved in this initial effort. So yeah, so, yeah, I don't know what the next, I mean, I was thinking the dome, you know, over the whole middle school, high school campus.
Don't put a swimming pool.
Yeah, you know, nobody, there's one high school in Vermont that has a swimming pool. But there's no, Vermont's the only state that doesn't have varsity swimming as a sport. How about that?
If we had a pool, we could have.
Yeah, we also don't have volleyball. We're the only state that doesn't have volleyball, but I'm told that's changing.
Who is on your investment committee?
Kurt Schuler, Joanna Bott, myself, Matt Higgins. Barney McLean, who's a former parent in the district, is, does all of our books and does our taxes for free, which is a significant benefit to the district. He's a fantastic person, high integrity, good guy, amazing kids. And we're like all over the world. But, yeah, and you know, that's where we, that's where we sit. We're going to be having our annual meeting, which we have to have. That's in the process of being scheduled right now. And really, that's kind of present some reports and take minutes and adjourn.
So again, I appreciate Pat providing an overview. I mean, I think one of the things that highlights for us is that, you know, is we're within a city that has a lot going on with city center development and all of the subcommittees that, that are currently in play. Some of the dynamics that are happening within the city, you know, at Chamberlain and, and this school. And the need for a future direction is, again, what I've talked about, and administrators and I are working on, and, you know, I need to roll out the 2020, a vision that the board can have some say and some affirmation. And, and I think that's probably one of the most needed documents that, that needs to happen. And again, if, as Patrick said, if it's an identified need, and it's supported by the community and the direction for our forward thinking, then I think we're able to go out and say, if it's an academic, if it's a program, if it's a building, if it's whatever, we're able to go and, and really, again, solicit our alumni, solicit our, our, our others around us, and, and look to do that in a collaborative way. In addition to, how do we support it as a district initiative? I am very, you know, mindful of the ability to, to raise money. But I, what I know is that we need a purpose, and we need a, a focus, and we need some energy. And again, I, I don't mean that by, you know, any ill will to the foundation, but they don't, they don't really have any driving objective right now. And, you know, I haven't pushed, nor Patrick pushed me or, or any of the foundation to, to put money back into that budget as far as a directorship, until really, I think we agree that we have a plan. That certainly rests on my shoulders, along with, with many others around trying to figure out our future. And again, I don't mean that by a negative thing. I think we've got a lot of great future plans. We have directions and objectives. But, you know, what, what do we need for our facilities to, to go into the, you know, 2020 and beyond is going to be an important piece.
Well, in a way, a swimming pool is a great example. Maybe it's not the example, but it's the example of the right kind of target. It's tangible. It's not something that you would expect necessarily that taxpayers would do, because it's hard to argue that it's an essential. And I'd say essentials that taxpayers should cover, but it would be useful. And there are, there, I'm sure, are other needs that are maybe a little less glamorous than that, that would, would also suit. I mean, we're talking about raising $90,000 for light structure.
Yeah.
Not like we don't have needs.
Those tend to be the ones that people.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, it's a lot easier to raise money for bricks and mortar or physical improvements than it is for program, because people can see what they, what they do.
And I think that, you know, if it's a sustainable expectation, that's far different than, than a one-time goal, objective, you know, to build or to construct or whatever. And, you know, I do think there's some, got to be some mindfulness between, you know, what we're asking, you know, the amount that we're looking for in comparison to our total budget forecast. And this will be a component of the, of the financial stewardship look as well. And it may be that as we look to our 2020, we're short X amount of dollars, and where can we go to get it, to get this done? And it may be avenues such as, you know, the foundation or other entities or alumni to, to help us get it. But we need, really do need a clear, you know, expectation, focus, and plan. Again, we have buildings that are functioning well, but are certainly aging, and they. And they are going to need, you know, I think, you know, more careful look as we move to the future. So, anyway.
I don't know that, I mean, certainly our peer communities, you know, Burlington's athletic complex was a bond vote for over six million dollars, you know. So there's, you know, and CBUs tonight at their school board meeting, they're looking at two synthetic fields for over two and a half million dollars as part of a, you know, as part of a community-supported entity or operation. So I, and there were definitely times during the campaign when we were trying to raise the money for the athletic complex where in my head I thought, boy, a bond vote would have been a lot of, you know. And so, just to put that on the table. And so I don't want to pretend that that's the only way that we could ever do any kind of large-scale capital improvement in the district. You know, certainly if there are other projects going on, it might be a good degree opportunity. We're a public-private partnership, but in turn, you know, I mean, the playground would be a great example if somebody wants to give money to the playground. We're like completely positioned to receive that money and push it right back after the playground. That's a great example.
Yeah, unfortunately, what we're not, and they'll think, is well-positioned to really have some resources to help raise the money for.
Yeah.
Something like that, because we just don't have.
We're just kind of waiting.
That's right.
Yeah, nail on the head.
All right. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
That takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is Policy D.
Six.
We're absolutely employees. I can read that seven degrees. I have read that.
Is that a record? Seven?
No, I don't think so. I'm not. So, again, we've kind of gone back and forth on this and Pietro's weighed in. Thank you for coming, ladies. Thank you, Patrick. Back and forth on kind of more inclusive and then less inclusive and what is in front of you. And I'm happy to have Winn talk a little bit more. He's been kind of the go-between for me, between Pietro's, Pietro-specific and us. But what's represented in your information is actually the least restrictive. And then he's provided comments in blue or in the first sheet on how you would expand that. So I think the decision for the board tonight is some more definitive direction to say, include it all or exclude it. And we didn't have, at the last meeting, we didn't have the solidified comments from Pietro that we do tonight. And so instead of including them, I chose to exclude and have a conversation, perhaps one more time, maybe more. So questions from the board or Winn, would you like to add anything else?
Well, I've spoken to Pietro a number of times about this and it's really, we need the direction of the board. Do we, do we continue in the scope of language and intent that you see in front of you with D six? Or do we go based solely on what the law says we have to do? And those are the two. That's the paradox.
We've talked a lot about that in the past. I think Pietro's comments are particularly useful because they make clear that by going beyond what the law requires, you assume risks that you don't have to assume. That's absolutely true. You also have an opportunity to guide the culture of your institution in a way that the law doesn't require in a more positive way, if that's what you want to do. But you can't do it without taking some risk.
I mean, are there, well, I guess, yeah, reading through this troubled me a lot about where the direction we're going, frankly. I hadn't connected all the dots as far as the risks. And a couple of points that kind of jumped out in my mind is, number one, is this a problem that needs to be fixed? And I do not get any impression from any kind of monitoring reports, any kind of things that we're looking at, that this really is an issue. Maybe occasionally something pops up, but it seems to be getting addressed. Perhaps I'm wrong about that, but that's kind of, that's my impression. So if there's not something that we're needing to address by expanding this policy, then I look at the downsides and what really hit me most there was the potential to tie the hands of our administration, of the supervisors, of making their job even more difficult than perhaps it already is, which it's my impression that it isn't necessarily that easy to undertake disciplinary actions. With the grievance mechanism and such, that's always on their mind. And if this is an additional item that they have to be concerned about, you know, I don't think I'm prepared, at least today, I'm going to have to think more about it and, you know, talk more about it, you know, to push with this. I, that's kind of, so this is really, it really troubled me. And I guess I, probably if I thought more deeply, I would have come up with these myself, but it took Pietro to lay it out a little bit more for me.
Yeah, again, I think, good feedback, Martin. I mean, anytime we stretch, you know, a policy farther than is expected, you know, we do reach ourselves to, you know, it's, how are we going to ensure we can fulfill all of those additional requirements? And I think the policy is very different than some of our procedures, internal procedures in which can exist within the district. You know, for instance, when we hear, you know, these types of things, there's a response that we have. It doesn't necessarily trigger this particular policy, but it's a practice or a procedure that we have embedded, you know, that can be embedded in our practice. And sometimes those are just as effective, in some cases more, because it doesn't restrict you, you know.
Right, that, yeah, that kind of adds, actually, the third point of this, that it doesn't seem to be a problem. Is this the best way to address the problem? Are we already able to address the problem? And are we bringing in some, too many negatives by expanding it? So I appreciate you mentioning the procedures as well.
Yeah, I had a similar reaction, Martin. I think when, in one of the readings of this policy, the issue came up with, to the board of what efforts we might want to take to really look at, you know, sculpting the culture of the district. And that is, I think, what drove me personally towards something that was broader in scope. But when I saw the downside here, I feel like, you know, one, I feel like we're in some ways, you know, scoping out an issue that doesn't really exist right now. If I'm thinking of policies that I'd like to really leverage to define the culture, this is not one I'd pick out. And I also feel like it becomes very difficult to administer. So I also looked at Pietro's feedback and I kind of went, I think we're over-engineering a solution to a problem the district doesn't see that much of. But I guess the question to you, David, and the administrators is, are practices in place? You know, one, are we, is it more of an issue than we are aware of through monitoring reports? And two, are the practices we have in place vis-à-vis procedures adequate to support interventions that do support the kind of culture we're talking about without making this policy so cumbersome?
Yeah, I believe them to be adequate. You know, I'm not in the building every single day. Obviously, if there is, this policy gets activated, we get informed and we're in the process. And I can tell you that this is not regularly activated. We do. I know Winn this year, how many have we had this year?
I just had one two weeks ago. It was dealt with pretty efficiently through, mainly through procedure. There's a policy connection to that. But I really feel like we've got the administrative structure to be able to handle that. If it doesn't rise to harassment, there are kind of sub-levels that deal with it very directly. Your policy governance, treatment of staff focuses on that as well. So there are a number of structural ways for us to address it.
My, you know, my big concern, and I think this is the same thing with job descriptions and things of that nature, they need to reflect, you know, adequately what we're trying to do. And, you know, I don't want to have a situation where if we all go away, you know, and there's a situation that begins, we don't have practices in play that really ensure the protection of our children and staff, et cetera. So, I mean, I think it does that and currently we have those practices. Maybe we want to solidify and provide you with where some of our procedures are that connect some of these other pieces for you. So just again, procedures and practices are communicated to you. Again, I think as we talk about meeting our ends, I think that's an important component for me.
So I want to take a little different role than I usually take and really advocate for opposition. So if anybody thinks I should step out of the chair to do that. I got all surprised by what Pietro said and as kind of the advocate for doing the policy this way, I tried to say those things to you and maybe wasn't fair enough. Absolutely, there is a downside to adopting a policy that says, "We do more than the law requires." But if you want to sculpt the culture, if you want to say, "We are a good employer." You make a commitment and you live up to that commitment. And that's what this is. It says, "We don't just meet the law. We ensure," or "We undertake an obligation to ensure that, in fact, our employees are treated in a fair way, even if the law doesn't require it. And we set up a procedure to deal with it if they're not." And I would say to you, you might say, "Well, if it ain't broke, don't fix it." You don't know if it's broken. Because there's no, there's no opportunity for an employee who feels badly treated in a way that's outside of the law to bring that forward and get that addressed and know that it will be addressed and know that they will be protected from any retaliation. Now, we employ good people and I think they do good work. And so that's the guarantee that we have against this, from my perspective. So I like it the way it is, the way it's been drafted. I like it the way it is because I think you do sculpt the culture, the culture of the institution you run by the commitments you make and you live up to. And that may mean you take some legal risk. And I don't think that legal risk is outrageously high. We're insured. If we make a mistake, we make it right.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yeah.
Once you put all the additional language into this kind of policy, how hard is it to then have some subsequent board decide to take it out? I mean, because...
A board can take it up and change it tomorrow.
Okay.
I guess it would take them two readings.
Take eight readings.
But it would also...
Probably not.
The perspective of taking away something like this...
Well, you have to live with that.
That would be kind of negative.
You have to live with that.
But I still, if there's a better, perhaps there's a better way than putting it into a policy that can give rise to further difficulties or to difficulties of supervisors supervising employees. I can, I could imagine that even with issues that we've seen over the, that I've seen over the past three-plus years in executive session on individuals, that if they could point to certain language that we have, that the supervisors were significantly annoying them or intimidating or inappropriately penalizing and putting that kind of stuff, making it all actionable, even, I understand it's going to be on law.
But it's got to be extreme or systemic.
Yeah, but I, I mean, my fear about that, I guess my conservative fear about that is we live in a pretty litigious society here. And are we, are we asking for trouble in some way?
Well, if I had been asked to draft this for a client, first of all, if I'd been asked to comment on it for a client, I would have said exactly what Pietro said. I mean, his comments are very well-taken. You know, the district is taking risks it doesn't have to take. If I'd been asked by an employer to write a policy that does what this does and take no risk, I probably could think of a way to do that. You could probably say, "The district reserves the right to behave in a different fashion, but intends to do the following." You could do that. And you would, if you are sufficiently clear, you would assume no risks that you're not legally obligated to assume. I wouldn't do that as a matter of public policy, as a matter of, as a member of this board, I wouldn't support that. And I think if you, if you mean something and you say it and you make a commitment and you live up to your commitment, that's my attitude.
As someone who I didn't see and I might not have found them all, even if I read it lots, I probably wouldn't have determined all the downsides. So this is really helpful for me because I wouldn't have picked all that. And, you know, with what Winn and David are saying, if there are already processes and procedures in place to address that kind of behavior, is it too much? Is this going too far?
I don't, I don't see how there are. If you were an employee and you said, "I've been subjected to extreme continuing offensive conduct because my supervisor doesn't like me," there's no, there's nothing in our policies that prevent that.
I mean, I think, you know, grievance options that exist in our contracts certainly allow for individuals to express that. And so, you know, one of the things, and I can go either way here. I mean, what I want to say, you know, we've been working hard with mid-level managers. These are the mid-level supervisors to ensure the working conditions are there, messages are clear, expectations, performance, et cetera, evaluations. But I do think that, you know, we do have an avenue currently that exists through the grievance process, union, non-union, that I think works really well and we've exercised that.
And let me ask a follow-up for just what you're mentioning. If this policy is in place, is perceived violations of this, would they be grievable? Would this be something that could be brought under grievance?
Well, the grievance is specific to the contract.
Contract.
And the contract, you know, is specific to working conditions, right? Working conditions and outline.
But you have to violate the contract.
That's right.
It's got to violate the contract. It doesn't violate the contract. So if an individual is, thinks there are problems under this policy, they wouldn't necessarily, they wouldn't, would not be able to bring a grievance under the contract?
Well, they can, they can bring a grievance. And again, this happens in many situations where a grievance will come forward, it's not founded as a violation, but by the mere fact of the review and the discussion, there's affirmation by the individual who's brought forth and the discussion between the administrator rendering it to say, "This was valuable information. It's not in violation, but, you know, this is what we can do for you."
Let me, let me make this even more clear. That, is this inviting additional grievances? I mean, is this, is this an avenue for additional grievances?
According to Pietro, it is.
I don't think that if you're talking about grievance, depends on what you, how you mean the word grievance. If you mean grievance in the way that it's defined by the contract, it's not properly grievable unless the conduct violates some provision of the contract. So if you, if you were harassed on the job and it was not due to protect the classification and it didn't violate the black letter of the contract, the legally appropriate response to that grievance is it's denied. And that's exactly the point. I guess I would say this to you in terms of thinking about this. I think you should read this and ask yourself a question. Would you be happy to know that one of our employees was subjected to such behavior and there's nothing in our rules that prohibits it? Should be, maybe happy is the wrong word.
Yeah, but that's not what Pietro has given us counsel on. It's not saying that our current policy allows certain kinds of behavior that could be characterized as harassment.
Oh, I think he absolutely is saying that. The law only requires that harassment which is illegal be prohibited. And if you look at the model policies, that is all they prohibit. So if it doesn't violate the contract, or if you're not a collective bargaining authority and we don't have a policy against it, it's kind of like policy governance. The supervisor can do it.
See, I feel like there, when we have on our agenda next, we have executive limitations policy monitoring. I feel like treatment of staff is where a lot of this gets addressed. And to me, it's, if I think culturally where we're trying to influence more, it's not the specificity around harassment. It's really in what's the culture of, you know, and the climate that the district is trying to promote in a positive way versus the, kind of the dotting the i's and crossing the t's on the harassment component.
Well, I think, I hear what you're saying and I think you could get at this issue from that direction. If you if you did get at it from that direction, you would not be creating enforceable expectation on the part of the employee that that policy would be lived up to. So they'll, I hate to use you as an example, but because you're the superintendent, you are the example. So if the superintendent violates that policy, he's accountable to the board for that and that is all. And the employer employee could say superintendent violated the policy and the board chose not to do anything about it. And there's no process for documenting the facts or addressing it. Not required. So this is how you take that idea and you put it into operation.
I think the hard thing for me is we have, I believe, some triangulation of of policies. And I think Elizabeth hit on that one, you know, treatment of staff which is coming up and then we have we have this policy. You know, and I haven't done this crosswalk, so I'm just envisioning that, you know, in some ways we have triple, quadruple protect, you know, connections and that as you look at the scope, you know, the sculpture of of our district, it's likely we've got probably a whole lot more detail than we need or triple coverage in areas for our people. And this may be one of those areas and I I am just wanting to be mindful of, do we have it covered somewhere else that adequately supports our employee and and us to do the due diligence that we need to?
The third leg of that triangulation is the feedback process that the board adopted and it's on our website that triggers an investigation. Like we were rich, if there may not be a hammer on the end of that, if it's not in the nine protected classes of harassment, but it does get investigated and it does get dealt with from a disciplinary standpoint without the-
And it does get reported back to the board on the numbers of the feedback that we get. You know, my my tendency is to to think about it not being more inclusive, looking at where the triangulation exists, that's my word, I don't know that that's the right word, and making sure that there is coverage to you, the board, in practices and procedures that make you feel good that, hey, I'm I'm an employee here and this happens to me and the district has a response to this employee to be a good employer. I mean, I think that's what you want me to be able to tell you.
Right.
So so my suggestion would be right now, know where else are these things, you know, where where can we ensure that there's practices and procedures in play, including our our feedback process? Come back to you with how that, how this will will be a suggestion on how that would be worked out. If that meets your needs, then we adopt, we would have then adopt these six as essentially written.
And I and I would say this to you, in the interest of being totally fair, even though I think we should do this. You know, we we could push from a policy level more, a little more specifically. Several times, actually, we've looked at that and chosen not to do that. So, you know, if we weren't, if you if you think about this from a policy governance point of view, the whole policy doesn't fit in with how we do things. But we're required to do it in respect to the protected classification, so we do it. Do I think we should do it in other areas? Yes, I do. You know, if I don't have the votes, I don't have the votes. I can understand that. I won't say that I don't think it's a good idea to do it, because I do.
Well, I like David's idea about seeing where else it's covered. Before we move on this, just look at, take a look at some other policies and see where it's addressed.
Well, I think there is one other issue, though, and that is this is a required policy. And we've had it kicking around for a long time.
No, I think there there's a current harassment policy that's there.
But the reason it came up is because it's not adequate to being compliant with the law. So I would say this to you, if we're not gonna do this, or even if you're maybe gonna do this in two months or three months,
Let's get something.
You should put something in place that complies with the law. Because although I might be willing to intentionally undertake more obligations than I have, I am not willing to unintentionally fail to meet the legal obligations that I should.
Oh, absolutely. But I don't I don't think that that's why this came up. I think this came up because we were trying to expand it to include unlawful discrimination. That that the harassment policy was in there, but but in the executive limitations monitoring report for treatment of staff, it said, we are giving the staff all these policies on harassment and on discrimination and all that. And I said, well, no, there's no policy on on unlawful discrimination. And the next step for that was for us to try to incorporate that into this policy for harassment. That was like the eight readings ago. And from there, you started this, we changed it a bit, well, changed it a lot. So so that's kind of, so I don't think that we're, we have a not in compliance with the law with the current harassment. We should double, we should double check to make sure, but I don't think that's why we are here.
Pretty close. Yeah, the issue with discrimination, discrimination was a non-required policy where harassment was required. In the early iterations, I merged the two and that's that sent us down that path. And then we got to a point and I said, I don't have that technical skill. We went to Pietro.
So I think I think we are actually compliant with the law currently, with our current policy in play until this one changes. I mean,
I think we should check.
I think we should check too, because it's changed enough that I can't say with certainty that we are.
Well, you know, a couple of things, I'm not at the point where I should say no to this. That's not where I am. Because because I I do want to make sure that we have an environment that these things aren't happening and there's recourse if they're happening. It's just, you know, I want to make sure that this is the the best way to do that. And and I would like to understand, I guess for for the next time we bring this up, I mean, eighth reading or whatever, that this additional information of where the administration thinks this is covered. And and second, I would like to see the harassment policy that, well, the question is, does the current one that we have now, is it sufficient? Is it legal? And and I'd like to have that in hand and compare these two to really understand where the differences are to to make a more informed decision. So that's kind of where I would like to see.
Yeah. And I think at the next meeting, if we're not in compliant, then there could be a push just to get one that is gonna meet the compliance while we continue to maybe-
And if it doesn't, it doesn't, I don't think have to be next meeting as far as for the whole consideration.
No, but certainly we ought to know.
Well, we need to get it done.
Whether we are in compliance.
Well, yeah, that part.
We ought to know that. Because if we're not, we should get there fast.
Yep. Okay.
I think there's a consensus to get this to a ninth reading. That takes us to our eighth reading. That takes us to two point one, treatment of staff. And we have, so you have these in parallel. This is probably what we did before is we now have two, two and two one.
So we probably don't need to do two point two.
Right, it's still, right. But it remember, the the reason that we had it there, we we wanted to provide it so you could view it together with it, right?
And this, I just want to make sure I have it right. This is still dated September nineteenth, two thousand twelve at the top.
Yeah.
Are we going over it at all today?
Well, that's the question is whether people have read it sufficiently, are you ready to to read it and take action on it tonight or not?
Well, we we still don't know about the harassment policy. And and that was my understanding that whether we can finalize this.
Without having the-
We first need to finalize that. Maybe not anymore because actually the original issue was, if you look on page two of five, there's this list of all this evidence and towards the bottom, unlawful harassment of protected classes, unlawful discrimination of protected classes. And and the administration is pointing to those two policies that are provided to the staff as showing compliance, I think, under actually policy three. The problem was that there is no policy anywhere about unlawful discrimination of protected classes. That's what started this whole ball. It is that we were going to try to make the policy on harassment also include discrimination. So now we're at a point where it doesn't include discrimination and something still needs to be done about what you're saying in here about unlawful discrimination. Because it's not true. There isn't, the policy is provided and writing to all, there is no policy that is provided in writing to all individuals on unlawful discrimination.
Is there anything provided in writing to new employees regarding discrimination?
Well, that was my question a long time ago and there wasn't. I mean, I remember that.
I don't think there's anything when that we have provided. You know, we go over it in orientation.
I will say in paragraph two of this this version, harassment may be a form of unlawful discrimination. So it does bridge the two.
Well, that, but that's just one type of discrimination.
I mean, that that is the, that that reflects historically how the law against harassment came to be. Because there was, there was, it was the law prohibiting discrimination based upon gender. And typically speaking, the idea was that discrimination was in terms of formal action that was taken against the employee based upon their gender or not taken based upon their gender. And the courts came along at some point in the seventies and said, not only is it when the employer makes a formal decision about somebody that they can be discriminated against against based on gender, but if the climate is such that it's difficult to be a woman employee for this employer, that's a form of discrimination and therefore it's harassment based on gender is illegal. And that idea has been expanded to say if it's illegal to harass somebody based on their gender because it's discrimination, it's illegal to do that because of their race, it's illegal to do that because of any protected class. That's the relationship between the two. Harassment is a way that people get discriminated against.
But but I think like, for instance, if if somebody does not get a promotion.
That's not harassment, but maybe discrimination.
Discrimination and there's no policy that is provided. There's still an-
Still against the law.
It's still against the law. I'm not even saying here that you have to provide that policy. You you can go or you have to provide that policy in discrimination. You can go back and look at the detailed policy number one and and decide whether you want to have this, if discrimination really fits in. And I don't know, I'm leaving it to you. My my only point was is that you don't have a policy of discrimination that's being provided and you've said that you do. And you and you and you say that that's part of the evidence for compliance for number three, which is we provide all this stuff. And so it's not compliant. So that's what needs to be dealt with. Maybe discrimination doesn't have to be part of your definition. I don't know.
That's what I'm thinking. I mean, my, and maybe my, in detail policy one, maybe my evidence to support detail policy one is too inclusive. I'm not, I'm not, I'm gonna have to think this over again.
Well, if if when was saying it's covered during a new employee orientation period, if there's an agenda item that talks about unlawful discrimination, I would just refer as evidence, the agenda, if this is covered during the agenda for a new-
It was a very narrow concern that I had.
It's all your fault.
I know.
It's all my fault. I don't know.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying for me, I'm looking back on my fault, my detail policy. You know, the evidence that I provided is probably too broad. So I could go back and provide evidence to that, what you just said, I think. Then that does correct. And then under two, discriminated against, seven was non-distracted. I think then obviously I wouldn't need to refer, I could, I suppose, back to the same evidence. If I made that change. Yeah. Okay.
I mean, I leave, you know, that that's the problem I leave it to.
Yeah, I think I think there's, I think there's some resolution to to that. I I get it. I think my evidence is too
Too detailed.
Too detailed.
And- Well, no, it's not necessarily too detailed, it's just that on that one detail, it's wrong.
Wrong. More specifically, you're saying. Yeah. Are there other comments about the report?
I guess that was all.
Okay.
I will say that the definition of nepotism, the way that we deal with nepotism is narrower than the way some employers would approach this. Which is not to say it's inappropriate, but some employers would simply say, we don't hire relatives of other employees. We just don't do that. I'm not inclined to think we should take such a strong stance.
We can't do that. We have so many husband-wife teams even.
Right. Part of that is, you know, as people begin their, you know, it's it's whether it's a hire or it's a, you know, it's after too, right? After employment, people, you know, get married, yeah. So, and partners, so it happens.
But there still are employers who do take that.
More, I'm aware of that. I I'm often, you know, most sensitive to, you know, the evaluative roles in which people would be entering into, you know, that.
I think that makes good sense. Just want to go on the same page on this.
Okay. All right, so I have good feedback. I appreciate that. Helpful. So we'll bring it back.
All right. That takes us to our next agenda. Right?
No, treatment of parents.
Oh, treatment of parents.
Yeah.
Forgot about that.
We're still thinking.
We're still thinking. That's right, here we go. So the yellow is added since when, David?
Since our last. So what we have done is we have, you know, our marking system is gonna need to change going forward. Either we're gonna take everything out from the last report, but I think it's unfair for us to do that until we, you know, have gone through that. So I think some of you have wanted to see the 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 past and so now we've highlighted the new in yellow.
But the yellow is not new from last.
It's not necessarily new, but there's there's components of that. So I don't know if you want to just look at a specific piece, you know, we-
Number two is not changed at all. I kind of went through 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 it and number three was not changed at all either from what and number four was changed, but it was striking.
Like the survey was was provided in this one that, you know, I mean, like in detail two. So communication specific to the survey.
Yeah, but that was the same as we went through last.
No, we went through that last time. I don't think there was any issue with those two. I think the first issue, if I recall, was number
Four.
Was number four. And and you did fix, it was my issue as far as striking things since the last report.
Right, that that had happened, right. But I don't know that we have striked everything correctly. I'm kind of getting confused now that we did this last time. So
I think it's right.
Well, the other issue was whether the tunnel elevator was going to be mentioned as a violation, but then is being addressed. I don't know about that.
That's not in here. We did say we needed to have it mentioned in here because at the time of the report, we knew it existed as a problem.
So what would you like? I mean, I think we're still a little confused on what you're saying. That's what I'm hearing or feeling. Do you wanna strike all past, only include new? Anything that's relevant in the monitoring of of this particular report, treatment of students, parents and guardians?
Well, I think for number four, and I think you did, yeah, policy detail number four in evidence. I think you did what my one, one of my two concerns was, which was, don't just keep on having the same stuff we've seen in our previous report. And so you did strike that. So it was essentially since the last report, here are the things that are relevant. And and the other, the other question I had was that the tunnel elevator, the fact that that has been out, I mean, does that make this, is that a violation of this detailed policy, at least for the period of time that the elevator is out? I I mean, does that make this, is that a violation of this detailed policy, at least for the period of time that the elevator is out? And should that be noted in that, in fact, there's a compliance, you know, it's planned right now?
I think I think that's an example exactly as as to how monitoring ought to work.
Yeah, I mean, I, cause you want it in a time. I I'm I'm obviously I'm saying I've got a violation here under this particular. Policy. Anyway, um but to be articulate of the elevator, for example, should be on there.
Right.
Martin, which detail policy do you think that should go under?
Uh, number four.
Number four, yeah.
Yeah, fail to operate facilities in appropriate accessibility and privacy. So.
And then we can say that there's a plan in place and say.
Yep.
It's not like it necessarily inherently implies that there's claims.
No.
We just weren't able to.
So under under evidence, I will put that elevator is not working, but it's, you know. Whatever. And I do have an update and announcements for that, by the way, so. Okay.
So should we look at the other detailed policies? There any concern about detail funding which probably should go back?
I wonder if there's a way that we could sort of star, you know, where where we wanna make changes for the next time.
I think we need to make even meeting to meeting. I think it needs to be in a different color.
Well, that's what's happening is I've gotten.
Right.
And that's the leaves lot yellow from Tom. So.
Right. Because they don't think there were from the last meeting, I don't think there were a lot of things.
No, it was just that I actually wanted.
So I I think one of the problems is that that. There are some. Evidence that would remain in place from year to year and meeting to meeting. And if that is the case, that language should remain in the report. If if, for example. Detail policy four is an example of something different where in order to come into compliance.
There's a change.
A bunch of things occur. Those things are done. Thank you. Those things are done. There's no need to report them again.
But you wanna you want me to be be able to provide you evidence every time. And so the evidence can be. Reoccurring evidence, right? I mean, in some ways, there's evidence that there's something in place, you know.
Yeah, but you would not say that an example of compliance with detail policy four is that we put a ramp in place this year. If we put the ramp in place last year.
Right.
Right. So if we're fully.
It's no longer it no longer makes sense to say that.
Only, I mean, if we're fully compliant, then I essentially don't need a lot of evidence to tell you what I'm doing, right? It's in compliance. Okay.
I think another area that that things can kinda come out would be like in detail policy six where you're. You're putting in your current thinking on the um on the video monitors.
Yes.
And, you know, that that language will come out, obviously. But it will. You're just highlighting that to us to really um preface a conversation that you wanna have regarding the reasoning to change two point one.
Right.
Uh on or detail policy six.
So that's not really, that's right.
So I think for keeping track, I didn't have anything on one, two and three or four. No, I mean, that we haven't already.
Talked about.
Yeah.
Five.
But it's on there.
Any on six?
I I think six, we just need your recommendation for how you want to.
Make the.
Make the change or what you recommend to change.
Change. Yeah, I I highlighted the the desirability for change. Now I need to change it.
Yeah.
Got it.
I didn't have anything else in six either.
Seven?
Eight? Anything on the overall policy apart from that? Need to go back and look through the specific. Specifics? Okay. So we're not ready to approve this. We'll get there.
Thank you for the feedback. Yeah. Well, I think we well, we've highlighted them uh for you because they were either identified as talking uh questions that have come up from the board through the iterations. And so now I think we we need to just clean it up to make it pure, you know, pure 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 report.
I I think what we want is to see highlighted changes since the last time we've seen this report.
Right. New new changes.
So we'll un un yellow all of this.
Yeah.
And only yellow the things that I add.
You change. If you change anything.
So I'm gonna like, I'm gonna change policy five. For instance, you'll no longer see, you know, the highlighted yellow under why I'm doing it, but you'll only see the highlighted change in six.
And you think maybe strike out all the things that have lines through them?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Or or remove.
Just take them out.
Yeah.
Yeah. I got you. I'm I'm under there. I'm confused, but better now.
Okay.
Yeah, I I got you there.
That takes us to setting the agenda for a meeting. Someone anticipated that we're gonna have to get back to the harassment of employees policy. Accurately. Well done. Well, one thing that I don't see that I think we need to go back and do, and I don't know if we're ready to do it next time. Is to take action on doing something about the retirement.
Yeah, we're waiting for the pension committee to finish.
Their work.
Their work, which should be done next week.
So it doesn't.
I don't think it will quite make it here as a worry and but where it's on.
Put it on for June?
I think it's on for the the I think it's the first June meeting.
Okay. Any other changes that we need in this po- in this uh agenda?
You know, I don't know if this is um. Where this would get covered, um but uh. Do we have any kind of procedure or practice guidelines? For staff, you know, requesting funding for school-based. Programs outside of our current budget approval process?
For instance, I'm just so if they're wanting to do.
For instance, going online and getting a couple of iPads.
Just just hypothetically.
Yeah, we do have procedures currently in play. And we've, you know, put in play even, you know, some spending restrictions between now and the end of the year. We have procedures in play for work.
Well, these are, I'm thinking, are these donor donor sites, yeah.
Outside of that.
Yeah.
Some of these, some of those sites pose some some concerns to us, um you know, where there. Individuals that are going out and requesting these and then bringing them back into the district.
Well, I'm just anticipating, should we be thinking about some kind of practice there because. I mean, you know, my concerns are that the the district's gonna be burdened with the maintenance, the ongoing licensing fees for software. I don't know that we, you know, wouldn't wanna standardize equipment, that we wouldn't have had that opportunity to do. Again, I think it's.
Yeah.
Very innovative, but if if that practice was adopted, a little more wholesale across our schools, we would end up with a pretty. You know, mutated version of our our IT program.
It's what's hard is in in, you know, if it's it fits the line where you have equipment currently in your district. And then I'm just gonna say business wants to give you X number of those devices. Or somebody applies to do that, you know. Our ability to make sure they conform to our plan is in part what our issues are, you know. We don't need that many or, as you said, we don't have enough license for those if they're having to be licensed. We don't have enough staff to maintain them. So we we're we're in this. I think it would be good for us to come back with it because the tech folks have been working on it. Um John Stewart and Stewart, and I I don't know when, if you've had some of that too, but. I've asked them to work on coming up with a a plan, not just on this one thing, but I think I think there's overlap there.
Yeah, and it's not it's not limited to IT. I mean, I could envision it being used for field trips or, yeah, who who knows that.
Am I right, Stuart? You guys.
Well, I was just gonna, in terms of the IT, we're developing what we support, what we don't support. To be clear, you know, just on those particular issues, you can't just bring something in and say, IT support this, you know, we have what. What we approve for purchase, what we don't approve. Uh we tightened up on some of that, as you know, because of some of the uh requests for purchases. That weren't fitting into the plan.
The hard part is if it's.
But this donation piece in general, I mean, in a bigger question, you know. So I have a group that says, you know, yeah, we'll pay for your your bus to on this field trip. I mean, we haven't certainly gotten down to that grain size of, you know, what's a changing world. You know, in terms of those kinds of things.
Yeah. And and I, you know, but it's not alarming at that micro level. But I am anticipating there's some there's some hidden expense to the district with some of these and. Maybe more more concerned that there's some liability.
Well, again, we we have tried to be far more careful than we have in the past, that we still have work to do around, you know, where. And what is being purchased, you know, in the area of technology, you know, they have supply budgets, but, you know. If it's a technology piece, it's not to be purchased out of supplies and it has to conform with things that we. Have on our prescribed list. And, you know, the hard part is staying up with that list, you know. And what really is okay to have in, okay to, you know, doesn't require a lot of maintenance of us and works to the benefit of what we're trying to do for kids. So I I think it would be good, you know, um to think about some more specific handling of that.
I think agenda crowdsourcing is a new way of fundraising.
Say again?
Crowdsourcing, online fundraising is a new way to raise funds and.
Oh, yeah.
It's a different way of looking at selling, you know, tulip bulbs and all the other things that people have done to try to raise money for field trips. So. I think somehow addressing that type of fundraising maybe. But a lot of people are using it now.
We used to have a policy on gifts. In pre-policy governance days.
Yeah.
I don't know if we still do.
That was a sunsetted one.
Yeah.
But we have procedures in play.
It's like the old story of the Trojan horse, you know. Some gifts are good, but. Not all gifts are good.
Well, and then there's, yeah, there's a there's all kinds of dynamics to this this situation. You know, I don't wanna come across saying that, you know, we're not.
No.
You know, appreciative.
Other people wanna give things.
They just wanna give us things, but they do have to conform. I mean, you can't give us something that's gonna require us significant amount of maintenance and upkeep and. You know, et cetera, so.
I know several pieces of real property that I could arrange to get donated to the school district. I wouldn't advise the school district to accept them. If you know what I mean. There's a barge kinda out, I would give.
We could have, probably. So we do need to think about that. So uh the June meeting will have some, June, I believe the first meeting will have the retirement information.
Okay.
And we'll, you know, I'll work on coming up with some, just some more procedural and and maybe report that out in my report a little, I think might be the easiest way. On the handling of.
Gifts.
Gifts and funds. So is that agreeable?
Yeah. David, I just have a quick question on future agenda items, future financial planning says that it'll be on the May fifteenth meeting. And that's the May fifteenth meeting.
Yeah.
So when we, the future financial planning, that's the long-term planning for the district versus.
Well, it's it's just giving an update. It's it's an update meeting. So our future financial, this was part of the financial stewardship committee work. And so what we did is on the commitment to that group, we have, I'm gonna say. X number of meetings and we've staggered into those meetings, just kind of a report out to the board on, I think, three, three occasions. Just on the progress to date. So this is, that's one of them.
Okay.
And so that that is different, that that would be different than the the retirement piece.
Anything else on this agenda? Okay. Uh anything needs to be said about future agenda items? Got a bunch to be scheduled for May twenty.
Correct. Try to take those notes.
All right. That takes us to our minutes. Minutes at April seventeen. Any uh. Comments, corrections. Required? Hearing none, without objection, they'll be approved. Minutes of April twenty four. Any changes required in those minutes? Without objection, they'll be approved. Objection, they're approved. Consent agenda.
So before we we go there, I just, I wanna maybe. Uh just give you a little bit of an update. I I did say on on this that I would give. Information on the extended leave of absence and I put that in in there. So those are, I just pulled this out of the uh the contract, okay? Yep, thank you, Martin. And um. First, let me just say a couple of quick things, cause this is consent agenda. And if you wanna take one off, then you you want to, but I certainly want to um. On the leaves of the absences, I wanna specifically say that the contract currently in front of you. Um that I've just provided does provide clarity to timelines and what I would say, expectations of leaves. One of the things that I've definitely uh observed is that there there does need to be some, what I'll say, some procedural. You know, teeth put into this a little bit more. In the past, and for a number of years, folks have come to you in a variety of requests. Without any real, um what I'll say standardized process uh to the to the contract. I'm not saying that the contract language isn't good. That's not the point here. What I'm telling you is that I do believe there there needs to be a more delineated process by which individuals request a leave and and and. Where they can tell us what's going to be the benefit to the district. So what I'm wanting to let you know is that you do have leaves in front of you and we've had one of them that that is is a repeat uh here. What I wanna tell you, and I did say this in the in my notes, is that this will be a an area for the human resource director. To work with me to come up with a process, you know, a form, I'm not, I'm using form, but a process by which we. Continue forwardly uh these requests. We have in the past, as I said, have provided, I would say, quite very, quite a large variability of of um. Requests to be passed. I do believe these are appropriate. But I'm wanting to let you know that going forward, I will have a process for you. Again, this seems to be a a higher number than in the past. The other part, just in the consent agenda. Is I definitely wanna recognize, you know, Bill Brinkley, we're in this building, uh where he has spent the majority of his thirty-five years here and. He personally came to me and I'm, you know, hard not to get a little emotional. He, this is a gentleman who is. Dedicated his life to kids and he has, this was not an easy thing for him to do and he's not retiring. He's. Going to resign and and move on and continue to do things with kids, but he um. That was a a very emotional, as we have so many of these, but thirty-five years, quite impressive, all here at South Burlington, hired by Rick Marcock. And um quite a story around the hire that went on back in those days with him, but a very appreciative um individual. And then um obviously it gets on there. So again, it's part of the consent agenda. I've given more detail on it, should on the consent agenda, but. I wanted to provide you with that.
One issue that I note with respect to the leaves. Is that the contract requires notice by March first. Does the fact that we have not had this notice by March first first creating. Serious difficulties for the district in connection with these leave requests?
It does not. And in many ways, it actually uh provides some level of, what I'll say, relief in in some areas. Again, I think the district, the district is very much able to move uh forward, uh meet the needs of the students in a very appropriate way. The the date specific um has not been overly adhered to in the past. Uh I do think that going forward, that there should be some more rigid.
Maybe a reminder to numbers of.
Adherence to that that we're gonna follow this going forward, you know, at a time when the when the request doesn't sit in our hands, but going forward. Uh start of the year, I think, is an important piece. uh, start of the year, I think is an important piece, and I tie that back to kind of the HR, the work that we need to be doing, so.
All right, um, and with respect to the, um, bid for, uh, long, for life, long-term disability, accident, death coverage, uh, the recommendation, as I saw it when it came through, had an error in it. Do we have a correction on that?
I believe, I believe what's in your, uh, has been corrected, um, unless I'm not seeing it, Rich.
There was a, the original recommendation was that Sun Life be approved, but what you wanna approve is UNAM, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, with that.
That, that bid states Sun Life presented the lowest bid in the recommendation, so, uh, I do think this has to be corrected. The first paragraph says the business office recommends selecting UNAM, and then goes on to say Sun Life presented the lowest bid.
That's right. So, that's not actually correct. Hold on, I'm not feeling good about that. So, but it is UNAM that you're.
Yeah.
It's the Sun Life that is incorrect.
It is UNAM that had the lowest bid.
Well, Sun Life is referenced.
But.
No, but there's a correction on your notes.
Right, but.
Needs to be corrected in your official.
Is it in there?
Yeah. On the bottom, here in the document, the bid in UNAM was the best rate of one thirty-five, five thirty-nine, and you with three rate guarantees versus the Sun Life of one thirty-eight.
Yeah, I've, I've seen.
So, you're recommending.
So, let me suggest this. Let's take the bid for
Yeah, take that.
Disability off the consent agenda, and we'll do it specifically, so that we'll make clear what we're doing.
Yeah, I'd also, I don't know how you wanna address this, but I do have a concern on, um, the Pam Paget leave, um, that, um, her letter specifically, um, indicates that she would have the ability to return to my same position, and the contract language references, um, that it would be a, uh, let's read, um, form of position if available, or to substantially equivalent positions, so I wouldn't wanna create a, uh, liability for the district.
She's aware, and I'm happy to report to you that that would be so indicated to her, that the contractual language, you know, prevails. She knows that, I've had that verbal conversation.
For the same purpose, I, I'll interpret your comment as you recommend, or the request, that we take that off the consent agenda, and then we can.
Well, I'm just asking how it would get addressed, so if, if it's taking it off the agenda and getting it addressed.
I mean, I think the right answer is for the board in its approval to say it's approved, but specifically pursuant to the terms of the contract, not as made. Okay, so in order to do that, we need to take it like so, so, we're not doing very well on the consent agenda, right?
No, that's not.
That's all right. So, with respect to what's left on the consent agenda, and with the notation that we accept the resident retirement of William Brakley with great gratitude for his long service to this district, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. And with respect to the leave request of Pamela Paget, is there a motion to approve that leave request pursuant to the terms of the contract?
So moved, second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And with respect to the bid for life, long-term disability, and accident and death coverage for district employees, is there a motion to approve the, the bid of UNAM?
Yes.
Yes, so moved, uh, so moved, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
Sorry for that confusion.
That's all right, we got it fixed. Any need to take up, any comments on the accounts table? Done. Board self-evaluation discussion. They have a document here.
Yes, what you have in front of you is the document that modified, um, uh, the self-evaluation, um, based on the comments that we received the last time we reviewed this, probably two, a month ago now. So, probably the highlights of this are just changing to a scale of agree, disagree, and no opinion. Um, and then also, uh, that the, um, the back page is, really serves as feedback to David primarily. What this doesn't do, though, is it doesn't address the specific issues, um, that are covered in the policy. So, one of the things we have talked about is maybe utilizing that evaluation on a quarterly or semi-annual or annual basis, um, that we've been accustomed to seeing.
I didn't really understand that, sorry.
Well, I don't have the copy, do we have a copy of the old evaluation data?
Probably do, yeah.
And, and it follows along on deep, on a policy as well.
Yeah, the previous evaluation, Rich, had, um, uh, it was, it was in the form of policy governance, so it says the superintendent did not fail to keep the board informed, things like that.
Yeah.
But it was really hard to, um, utilize because it didn't give David any specific feedback.
Yeah, okay.
And this was an effort. This was an effort to really evaluate the current meeting that we're in, and to provide specific feedback to David from this meeting.
Okay. So, we're, we should be ready then to go ahead and use these instruments, right?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I think Elizabeth and I had a question whether we needed to adopt it, if this was actionable, whether it's a new part of policy.
I guess that makes, makes sense.
I don't, I don't think it would be required, but I think it makes good sense to do it.
Yeah.
You know, uh, again, it's.
Well, one of the key things that you did ask for a specific change was on a number seven on the board meeting evaluation. It was really what our obligation was to include um, staff, students, and community members, and it really, that really just got changed to the board sought to include. Um, so it was an effort to create that linkage. I think that was the only significant change.
All right, is there a motion to adopt these instruments as our, uh, school board meeting evaluation instruments?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Let's use them.
So, um, maybe more Elizabeth and Diane, have we, did we talk, would you, when would be the first, you wanna bring it into play, the next board meeting? What frequency?
We're doing it right now.
Okay.
We're doing it right now.
Well, I think I.
The frequency.
Every other meeting.
Yeah.
Same as we have right now.
Okay. It's very dark in here to me, I don't know if my eyes are.
It does seem dark.
It's so terrible.
Hair in my eye, keep it.
All right, I'm sorry. Still probably nothing to sign.